We want to welcome you to our Leavenworth City Commission meeting. We ask that you turn off for silence all cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and midnight and also available for viewing on YouTube. At this time, we have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. At this time, I'll be presenting a proclamation to Parks and Recreation. Our parks and recreation are bodily important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region. They build active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically disabled. Parks and Recreation programs increase a community economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. Parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetation buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife. Our parks and natural recreation areas ensure ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature. The U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. The city of Leavenworth recognized the benefits derived from parks and recreational resources. I, Jermaine Wilson, Mayor of the city of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month.
Yes, sir.
Say a few words.
Sure. Got you covered. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commission. Thank you, Paul, for you guys' support in our Parks and Rec programs and our parks. This past year, we've had quite a few new things in our parks and recreation with the addition of the Havens Park restroom, Stevie Park restroom, Hawthorne Splash Pad, some trails at Havens. We've had great numbers for our baseball leagues this summer. We've had great numbers for lifeguards, so we haven't had to have any pool closures or shutdowns. And so I'd like to invite everybody out to see our parks and our splash pad and enjoy the parks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, old business, consideration of previous minutes from June 13, 2023, regular meeting. There's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. I move that we accept the minutes from the previous Commission meeting on the 13th of June.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Oh, she's here? Oh, camera? All right. Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance, number 8219, the Mending Code of Ordinance, Chapter 30, offenses, Article 1, Section 30-8, illegal camping.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes since the first reading of this ordinance. As a quick reminder, this is to add to the city's toolbox. As we... Code of Ordinance is a living document, so as we put new things in and we encounter new challenges, we often come back to you with suggested modifications or changes to improve our performance. This one has to do with some squatting activities we've had in the city on private property. If you'll remember, the initial reason for bringing the camping ordinance to you was to prevent camping in city parks, so that people can continue to enjoy that without having that influence. Subsequent to that, we've had some challenges with some private property, unable to verify whether people actually had permission or not to camp on private property, and it's really tough on the neighbors to have that going on in their neighborhood. So if you have any specific questions, Chief Kitchens is here, City Attorney is also here, but this is just to help us with more tools to curb that type of activity in the city.
Any questions or comments from the Commission? This does require roll call, starting with Commissioner Leonhart.
Aye.
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 All right, pass is 5-0. Next item on the agenda, new business. This is open for public comments. Anyone who wish to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to two to three minutes. There will be no action taken by the Commission. Sarah, do we have anyone?
Yes, Kelly Garner.
Okay. Please come up, Ms. Kelly, to the podium. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Kelly Garner. My address is 301 Hines Street here in Leavenworth, Kansas. I want to talk about the Narcan. Since January of this year, six people from Leavenworth have died, including my 19-year-old daughter from fentanyl intoxication. Although the police response time was phenomenal, it took EMS four minutes to respond, which is why I think it is important for our police, our first responders, to be equipped and prepared with Narcan, the drug which reverses opioid intoxication. I feel it's imperative that Leavenworth Police Department follow the same protocol that many of the other departments have since the start of this epidemic, which is to require that the police department to carry Narcan on them to assist in saving our children's lives. Nearly 27,000 lives have been saved from the result in using Narcan. If I can help one person not have to go through what I went through, it's worth the pain this causes me to talk about it. I will spend the rest of my life spreading awareness to others about the dangers of fentanyl in the memory of my sweet baby girl, Desiree Washington.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, and sorry for your loss. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Next item on the agenda, general items, Mayor's appointment. I move to appoint to the Convention and Tourism Committee Brandon Sheehan to an unexpired term ending January 31, 2024.
Second.
All right, motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, bids, contracts, and agreement, consider award of bid for demolitions of unsafe and dangerous structures.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. On April 11 of this year, the Commission adopted Resolution B 2331 regarding a number of unsafe and dangerous structures. Since that time, staff has moved forward with the demolition process on three of those structures. We have another one that was taken down by the owner, another one has an active building permit on it. There's a few under extensions given by the Commission, and one has been repaired. So we move forward with the process on three of those properties. There's a number of items that we have to go through since we are using HUD funds for those, so we've completed all of that work. We opened bids for the demolition of the properties on June 20. We received two bids. One was incomplete, and so we were not able to read it. The other bid that we received was from Denton Excavating in the amount of $36,593. Denton is a company that we have worked before, and this price is in line with what we'd expect for the demolition of three single-family structures. So again, the funds for the demolition of the properties are allocated in the CDBG budget. There are no general funds that will be utilized for this. So staff would recommend acceptance of the demolition bid from Denton Excavating in an amount not to exceed $36,593. And if you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
Any questions or comments?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Nancy.
I've had a question from one of the neighbors of these properties. After we decide on this tonight, when would they probably be torn down?
Yep, so the contractor has 30 days from the time they sign the contract. There are a few items they'll need to take care of before they sign, insurance, just a few boxes to check, but we would expect that the contract would be signed here within the next week or two. So we would be thinking early August, we would be seeing these down at the latest.
Okay, thank you so much.
That was my question.
Commissioner Leonhart? Question or comment? All right. Okay, well, this requires a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
I move the acceptance of the demolition of the three properties from Denton Excavating in an amount not to exceed $36,593.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Leonhart.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider animal control services agreement between the city of Leavenworth and the city of Tonganoxie. Chief Kitchens.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the police department is before the governing body this evening, asking for you to approve the city of Leavenworth and the city of Tonganoxie entering into an animal control services agreement. Right now, the police department's animal control staff has an agreement with the Tonganoxie Police Department for those very rare occasions in which their existing structure is not sufficient and they can bring an animal to our animal control facility. We have that agreement with a few other, the Sheriff's Department, Lansing, and the like. In the early part of May, Chief Lawson from the Tonganoxie Police Department reached out to my office and we began discussions. He was asking for a change to the contract and an expansion of the agreement that we currently have. So essentially, what the contract would call for was that the Tonganoxie Police Department, throughout the course of the day, if they got called to some animal call, such as a dog bite or a dog running at large, that required them to take that animal into custody, we would send an animal control officer vehicle to the city of Tonganoxie, meet with them, take custody of the animal, bring it back, and house it at our facility. The biggest discussion that we had is over volume. I asked for some data. He provided some information to me over the course of the last two years. On average, it's going to take place about one time per month, is what we expect. And so I felt like we could adequately accommodate that volume of traffic, given the amount, the space capacity. One animal per month is not going to really make or break the animal control team. In terms of the budget, the contract would call for the city of Tonganoxie to pay the city of Leavenworth $1,100 a month, which is designed to cover all of the costs associated with, such as gas, transportation, housing, those sorts of things. If it were a case in which a resident of Tonganoxie owed the city of Leavenworth money, they would pay that directly to the city of Leavenworth, and we would get that separately from the $1,100 a month. For example, if it was a dog that was running at large and the owner found that we had it for a couple of days, they would come to the animal control facility and pay that separately. Other issues, such as medical care that were specific to an animal that Tonganoxie had that happened there, for example, if an animal got run over by a car and needed treatment, that would be the responsibility of the Tonganoxie, the city of Tonganoxie, they would take care of that separately. And so based on the discussions that we had, they presented a contract to us for us to review. Mr. Waters had the opportunity to review that. Their city attorney had the opportunity to review that. And then there is separately to all of this, a state statute that requires both the city of Tonganoxie Board of Commission and the city of Leavenworth to approve it. Chief Lawson took his on Monday and got that approved by the city of Tonganoxie, and so I would be asking for you to approve us entering into an agreement with the city of Tonganoxie for animal control services. I'll do my best to answer whatever questions that you might have.
Yes, ma'am.
City of Tonganoxie is a growing city. Do we have a maximum that we can take, that we can put in that contract?
So we have a couple of provisions in the contract of, first of all, there's a 120-day trial period that just says, let's see how things go for the first few months. Again, the estimation over the last couple of years is once per month. If it expands beyond that, we have the ability to tell the city of Tonganoxie, hey, that's just too many, you know, that's not something that we agreed upon. Or in the normal contract language, we have the ability to opt out after 30 days for a variety of reasons, you know, that sort of thing. And so, you know, my message to Chief Lawson was that we're happy to help and we think we can help generally, but our principal objective is to provide services to the city of Leavenworth and its residents. And so if at some point I felt concerned that that wasn't taking place, then we've had some additional discussions. But I'm comfortable that we can handle the capacity if that's the number. I'm comfortable that the $1,100 a month is satisfactory in terms of covering whatever costs we might have, food and water, gas, maintenance, those kinds of things. And so I recommend approval.
Appreciate it. Any other comments or questions from the Commission?
No, I think, just real quick, Chief, so you're thinking with this new contract, I mean, from a bandwidth capacity standpoint and everything, that one call a month is, I mean, I know you say you think it's probably fine, but I guess that's the one thing that's on my mind is...
That was probably the most discussion and debate we had. I had several meetings with the staff and the supervisor at Animal Control. I said, you know, this is what we're looking at. Are you comfortable that we can do that? And we feel like we can. And so, but again, we have those opt-out provisions. If it gets too much, we'll just say no.
They also have the Leavenworth County Human Society, where they also take animals, too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Chief.
Yes, sir.
There's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the city of Leavenworth to enter into an animal control services agreement with the city of Tonganoxie.
Second.
Yeah, motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion carried, 5-0. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Leonhart, are you good with the consent agenda?
Yes, I am.
Okay. It's on you, ma'am.
Okay. I move to approve claims for June 10, 2023, through June 23, 2023, in the amount of $1,567,646.65, net amount for payroll number 12, effective June 16, 2023, in the amount of $399,965.76, includes police and fire pensions, in the amount of $10,383.15.
Second.
Second.
Yeah. Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Before we enter into executive session, I want to go around the table to see if anyone have any updates or comments, starting with our city manager.
Yeah, a few things tonight, if you don't mind. So first of all, I want to talk about recycling. I know there's been a lot of questions about the recycling center in the city of Leavenworth. The recycling center is currently closed, and that's only because our longtime employee, Tom, who I've never gotten so many emails thanking a certain city employee for his service, and I got it for Tom, he's very popular out there, has retired. We have hired somebody else, and so the recycling center will reopen on July 6. I guess the feedback is good and that people use and enjoy and like the recycling center. I know it's tough also with a couple of weekends that have been infected. If we had the personnel to staff it, we would do so. Oftentimes in the summer, right before it gets hot, we experience some staffing issues in the refuse department. So we've had to pull some equipment operators who have CDLs over from the Streets Department to drive some of the refuse trucks. We had an illness, we had an injury, so we simply do not have personnel to be at the recycling center until the new employee starts. So next week, it'll be back open, and we anticipate going back to full-time hours at the recycle center, which leads me into refuse. We've had a couple times this past week where they did not finish the entire route. We had somebody get, we had two people get sick, I believe, in the middle of the day, and so we're doing the best we can. We also, usually if we're behind a little bit, we can take our refuse loads to the county transfer station, which is much closer than Waste Management. However, they have limited the number of loads we can take, and it's not their fault either. They have short staff, and then the company that comes and empties their bins from Ham's Quarry is having a driver shortage. And so it's sort of a cascading effect. We'll get to everything. Please call if we haven't, but we were trying to aggressively hire, but it just happens sometimes at the beginning of the summer. If you remember, 2021, we had some days where we didn't finish the routes. So we're doing the best we can, so bear with us a little bit on recycling and refuse. If there's any specific questions on that, I can answer them. One more note on refuse. So July 10 is when, that week is when the carts will start being delivered. Just for your information, there's about 9,000 carts that are going to be delivered in the city. We ended up with about 8,500 for the 95-gallon, about 650 for the 65-gallon, and about 650 people opted out. So pretty good rate of people who are entering the program. They can deliver about 500 a day. So if you do the math on that, that's three and a half to four weeks that it will take to get everything out. So they'll deliver about 500 a day, there's about 9,000 carts. We will not change the trash rules until the last cart is delivered. So we'll continue picking up everything, bags, so for that four-week period. So it looks like about August 1, that around there is when we'll officially transition once all the carts have been delivered. And so just, again, bear with us, I know it's a big change, but hopefully, once it's been in place for a while, it'll just become second nature.
I have had a couple of people did not realize, and I think the cards, sometimes cards get thrown out.
Sure.
People don't see them, but if they want to opt out, can they still call and opt out?
So they're getting their cart?
If they're getting their cart and they don't want...
So at this point, with the orders done and the information to the company, it would probably be after it's delivered. Then they can call in and have it picked up. You may suggest that they try it for a little while, but yeah, at this point, all the orders are in, and the manufacturing's taking place right now, and all the numbers and stuff like that, so we wouldn't be able to change course right now, but we could certainly make those accommodations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on refuse or recycling?
I talked to a lady a few weeks ago, and she just commented how, just the person she spoke with when she had a large item pickup here at the office was just very, very friendly and cordial and everything.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Couple other quick notes. We did have, the meeting's a little short tonight, we did have the audit presentation scheduled tonight under Staff Reports, and our auditor asked to change that, so we're going to move that to July. So that was supposed to be tonight, but that audit presentation will be in July. And then finally, and I didn't know if Commissioners Hingula or Batter were going to mention anything, had the honor of attending the change of command ceremony today. We welcome Colonel Dwayne Moser to the city and his family, so we're looking forward to establishing that relationship, but also just want to, I know he's not here, but say what an advocate for partnership Colonel Meisenheimer was in his time, the work that we did on the water supply issues, gate access issues, the help they've provided with developers and on the bridge project was, that's all under his leadership. So thank Colonel Meisenheimer for what he and his family gave to the Leavenworth community. That's all I have.
Yeah, thanks for the update. Appreciate it. Commissioner Leonhart?
No, I have nothing at this time. Thanks.
Commissioner Hingula?
Parks and Rec coming up next week. Everybody here knows that fireworks are illegal in the city of Leavenworth. There's lots of fireworks shows going on in the Kansas City area. In particular, around here, there's the fireworks display that is done up on Fort Leavenworth. It's always tremendous. There'll also be a fireworks display out in Lansing at Bernard Park, and that's a tremendous show to watch. So please be safe, don't play with fireworks here in the city, and don't have our police officers having to be that busy on the 4th of July, or the night before. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Commissioner? Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, I actually got a couple of things tonight. So wanted to, first of all, kind of clear the air. I know there's been some kind of questions going around about, I guess there's a group that is putting on a drag story hour this week here in Leavenworth, and I just wanted to go on the record and state that that's not something that the city of Leavenworth has put on, not sponsoring it or endorsing it. So I just wanted to make sure there's no confusion on that. And then another thing that's come up the last several weeks, I've had different folks reach out to me and inquire to the movie that was going to be shown at the dive-in movie event coming up in July at Womack Aquatic Center. And anyway, there was a concern about the content of the movie that's being shown and whether that was appropriate for families. And so really wanted to kind of throw it out there to the Commission right now and just, you know, maybe get some thoughts. I know we're not planning on showing the movie for a few weeks, but I think some of the concern was that maybe some of the topics being discussed might be better discussed with parents and their kids one-on-one instead of in a public setting. So anyway, with that, just turn it over to the Commission and get any thoughts or anything like that.
I've received those emails, individuals that was concerned regarding the movie, specifically toward the content. I've never watched the movie. I did reach out to our city manager and ask what was the process when it comes to selecting the movies. He informed me what the process was. It's the same process that's been used for many years, and so I don't think it's an agenda that's trying to be pushed. And I think we're at a season throughout society, no matter what you show nowadays, somebody's going to find something within the movie that's going to be offensive. That's my statement.
No, I appreciate your feedback. So definitely probably bring it up again, want to talk about it, you know, but wanted to go ahead and mention something, so.
What do you suggest?
Well, just talk about it a little bit more, and maybe, you know, we have a study session or something to think about it a little bit more. But I think, I haven't seen anybody that's shown any support of it, but more generated concerns that are out there. So I think, you know, Mayor Wilson, I think you could make, you can make an argument either way, that an agenda can be pushed either way, either side, and I don't disagree. I just think it's something that, you know, especially because we are in the climate we're in, too, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, maybe we need to be in the movie business, per se. So maybe it's something to be thinking about and considering, so.
So is your recommendation more so if the city should be sponsoring, showing movies, period? Is that what you're...
Period. If I may, I also reached out to the city manager. I came and talked to him, and I came away with the understanding that the selection of the movie is fairly random, you know? It's out of a group of movies that are within the license and the trending areas of the company that licenses us to show the movie. And it's just, here's the list of trending, okay, this one, and that's it. It's really a less than, a less than, there's no, obviously no agenda yet being done randomly like that.
Correct.
So maybe either we don't be showing movies, or we have more care taken in the selection of the movies, you know, so that it's something so generic that nobody could object to it.
And I don't think that's going to happen in today's society at all.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you'd end up having to go back to old movies, you know, and then there'll be somebody offended by the idea that, but why are you charging me to watch old movies?
Well, and I just love the fact that the city is actually providing an opportunity for families to come together and create memories, enjoy this summer occasion together. And, you know, they're signing up, you know, to watch this movie. And so, you know, I think the city is more so focusing on creating the environment for families to come in fellowship and enjoy the moment rather than pushing the agenda. I don't think that's the case at all, so.
I found it interesting that when I looked at the reviews, it said it may not be suitable for those under five or six years old because of the violence, some of the violence that's in it. There is some shooting and beating and things like that, so, you know, like the Three Stooges, I guess, but my grandchildren saw it, and I mean, you know, it didn't say anything about there being a gay character in it, and I don't think my grandchildren even knew that, and they're eight and 11. And, you know, I don't know. If you want to cancel the movie, cancel it. I mean, it's up to you, but I think a lot of people are going to want to, my grandchildren loved it because of all the action and stuff, but that's all I have to say about it.
Well, no, I appreciate it, and, you know, Commissioner Leonhart, I don't know if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, just real quick, well, you know, I've never seen the movie, you know, I don't have any kids. You know, I think the big focus is, you know, like Mayor Wilson said, you know, to get the families together and spend some quality time. And, you know, you're not going to please everybody all the time. You know, you could show a different movie that maybe somebody else thinks proper, but then somebody else, you know, is going to say, no, there's something wrong with that. So it's, and that's even as adults, different movies that we see, you know? I might like something, and somebody else is like, oh, no, that's... I might like something, and somebody else is like, oh, no, that's, you know, really bad. So I think the big focus is just having families get together and, you know, to be able to see a free movie. So, you know, that's where I'm concerned on that.
Yeah, they pay for it.
Yeah, it's not free.
Oh, it's not free?
Yeah, it's after hours. Yeah, I think it's $5.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, that's all I...
And buyer beware, if you don't want your kids exposed to this, don't bring them.
No, I appreciate that, Commissioner Leonhardt. I just want to get everybody's thoughts on it. I'm definitely a proponent of getting out of the movie business, you know, as a whole. I just, anyway, so I wanted to say that, but I appreciate feedback from everybody.
Yeah, appreciate you. Thank you. Commissioner Batter?
I don't have anything else tonight.
Yep. I just want to say God bless and happy Fourth of July. Have some fun, create memories, and try not to get hurt, be safe. At this time, we'll enter into executive session. How many minutes?
20 minutes.
20 minutes, alright.
6:52.
6:52, okay. I moved the city commission recess into executive session for a period of 20 minutes for the purpose of discussion and acquisition of real property pursuant to the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property exception per KSA 75-4319B6. The city commission, city manager, and city attorney will be present. The open meeting will resume in the city commission chambers at 6:52.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Commissioner Leonhardt?
Aye.
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 And now to executive session.
Alright, we're now into executive session.